Oh, you're going to Rono.
Yeah. Are you guys required by the law?
Uh, it it's supposed to take effect at a certain time. Yeah, I think they changed that.
Shoot, we don't even have internet in half county.
You still out? You have electric or what?
Oh, I'm here in town, yeah.
I mean, down here.
Yeah, my parents were H R A, the fire department. Yeah, usually they're out for weeks, but.
Our side of the mountain.
All the meetings ordered, please.
All right. Dave on track here to get out of here. Then we have a motion of good demands. Can anybody find anything that needed correcting?
I'll make a motion with brief improvements then.
No seconds.
Aye.
Right. Motion carries. Go ahead, open up the planning discussion and comprehensive plan. I think we all had, when you went last time, we were gonna try to have, what, six? Suggestions, uh. Critical needs. That we thought.
Do you have Claire's name that I gave you?
Yep, somewhere.
Look at you.
Sorry, not here to defend herself. I'm not quite sure that's what we're looking for, but. But I think it's fine. It's it's part of the discussion. Of, I think what we left here saying, we're, we've kind of done our needs assessment to an degree. We want to develop. Six issues that were, six was just a number. It could have been more or less, but we were trying to find six problems or. A number of problems that we wanted to say, these are one of the major things that are. What's the struggle? What should we do? And so hers, and I'm gonna go back to our original conversation is, some of these are solutions, some of them are problems like. Housing, I didn't understand that's probably a problem or some degree jobs and things. But, you know, an idea of the camp area for out of state people. Probably a solution more than a problem. Now, the mayor and I did meet last time. Anybody else have anything else they wanted to bring?
Well, I come up with. I think the most critical issue that's facing us is volunteers.
Volunteers?
People. And, uh. Then, to follow on with that. The planning commission needs to be. One of the things I think they need to look at as far as, uh, when they set up committees. Is that all these committees, I think, needs to have goals set up for them. So, they'll know what they're actually there to do, instead of letting the committee themselves set up goals. There should be goals set up. Uh, then, one of the biggest committees I think needs to be is, uh, marketing Weston. And, uh, in marketing Weston, uh, it should be communicated at least once a month. Through different means of communications. One thing I always liked is the letter, put it in the sanitation department bill. It gets out to everybody. Uh, I think it needs to be, needs information for marketing Weston needs to be more about. What has been accomplished? What is happening Weston? And what is planned to happen in Weston? And that's through all your committees, all your, all your departments. All the way down to all your committees. That your fair, your historical, what, all your committees you have. You know? And that information should be available and. Not only using things like the letter, but I think you should get radio, TV involved. And the social media. I found out by talking to people. People do not understand. What is happening in Weston? And why it's happening. Uh, they, they complain about the personal things that happen to them personally. And that's it. And they don't understand the problems, like the street department has, what problems do they have? And what have they done to accomplish the problem, take care of the problems that they are faced with? It's the same with the police department. You know, how many calls can you answer one night? One person, you know, complaining about dogs barking. No one shows up for dogs barking. I called and called and no, no one showed up. You know, whereas that, that police officer may have been on a domestic call or. Or subway traffic accident, just different stuff. People don't realize. What all, you know, and the same with the fire department. People don't realize how much a fire truck costs. You know, they've got people going around doing, you know, putting up petitions to. Get really municipal fee and the fire. But they don't realize what the cost. The fire truck is, the cost of. What it takes to put a fireman in these equipment, their training and service. And I think that is one of the marketing things, aren't, you need to market this, things like that. And, uh. One of the areas I think that I totally heard, but I think needs to be talked to is the school system. I think, uh, if we could get some high school students. Of course, I don't know what kind of different degrees they have up there, they're working on. But to get them to come to, say, the planning commission. If nothing else, it's just to sit and listen to what we go through. And then, they can tell us any criticism that they have. You'd be surprised how some of these young people. Think and how much advanced they are. They may be in a high school, but I was surprised in the past about working with high school students. And you learn a lot. Another thing to market, to get people to market and come, maybe come to some of these committees, the big volunteers. Is, uh, say, students at Grandwell State or Weston. Of course, there has to be someone contacting them to see if there would be, you know. An interest for a student in whatever degree they is to come. And know that they were invited to come. To a, a different committee and so forth. And, uh, maybe you could get some help that way. I always said, you know, that you talk about police officers here in Lewis County and, and state police and the sheriff and the city. You know, one of the greatest things I ever seen is the R T U C program put in high school. I think that you need an R T U C program for police officers. Now, I know they have, you know, they have, uh. Classes on, you know, justice and so forth. But how many actually know what a police officer really goes through unless they can come? And see what a policeman actually does, what deputy sheriff does, what a city policeman does. And so forth. They don't realize. And it may get them involved where they want to become one of those.
I think we had one interest a couple of weeks ago and he came and took a look at it and never came back.
That's, that's true.
Yeah.
I understand that. I just like the night when they, they, if I hadn't been drafted, I'd never have the service.
I made you stick around a little bit.
Cause I already looked at it. I.
Yeah.
But, uh.
When you, you were talking about E R, uh. I don't, I don't, I don't know, city uses Facebook enough. I don't. I mean, from a positive point. I know every last museum, every Monday we do something. It's like. Each Monday you can put out a new piece of glass, the history of a piece of glass. I don't know if you've seen it when I share. And then we end up getting thousands of hits all across the country, shared, 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 shared. People say, well, my grandma, that's all, that's really cool. I'd like to. Uh, maybe once, twice a week, Facebook, some kind of city Facebook page where. You shut, they're fixing the sidewalk on the street. They're cutting down to something.
I've tried.
Who, who, who won't come?
No, it's not me, different departments. I'm like, every week, let me know what you're working on. Give me an update. Let me know what problems you're having. I want to do an article and set it on Facebook. I, I, the only one I've got stuff from is Mike Starett.
But it's gotta be something positive, or, or if, or if you share a little video of the person singing at the farmer's market.
Yeah.
On Friday, then, then like a little more next Friday.
That's what I was talking about, marketing.
People, I don't, I don't know. The only site people go to when they go to Weston on Facebook is what Weston needs. And them's the only ones that, but there has to be a site where. And if they, they can't, it can't be like homeless turnbowl. It can't be the mayor putting out propaganda. It's gotta be. Someone that we get.
Well, Laura has done a good job of promoting events on the city's Facebook page. I have to give her a, a fair amount of credit.
But, but should the title of the Facebook site not be City of Weston Facebook page? Or what's it should be?
Are you a follower of our Facebook page?
Yeah. I know, I don't know. I have likes on lots of others. Like, I know what they're serving in the barbecue, you know, I know.
Well, I think.
A lot of those don't come up.
Yeah. Something needs to come up. You know, when you pick up your Facebook and you, you turn to Facebook, the first thing that should pop up if you can do it. The City of Weston or whatever.
You know, that's a good point in the sense of like, I don't even know how the algorithms work.
I don't either, yeah.
I, I just.
For Facebook and what's the first thing that pops up? Someone been dancing.
And what mine is, uh, I have, what pops up, I have liked, it's which frozen ice cream is Jenny Blue.
Yeah.
West Virginia Antiques Collective, Saint Mass United Methodist Church. Uh, uh, Lewis County Senior Center. It, it's Fishhawk Acres. I want to see what they're serving. Uh, you know, the, then there's Lewis County West Community Announcements page for that. So, so these are things that pop up. Most of the time, but City of Weston stuff doesn't pop up.
Are you sure you're a follower of us?
No, for me to get to Weston, if I got to.
Search for it.
I gotta search for it. I gotta.
Yeah, I went there, but see, it says you're following, okay. Yeah, I'm following, yeah. And, and so if I click on there, the last thing I see is see there's the. And I saw that on here.
I don't know.
I didn't ask for it or anything, it just popped up.
Three days ago. So, yeah, I, I have, then, yeah, so, but, but it.
But I don't know anything about that.
But anyway, I, we can move on.
There's where some high school students could help you out. Cause they know all about that stuff and.
Disagree. I just. Look, can I vent for you all for a second?
Yeah.
Feel free to say. Be quiet, hey, whiny boy, but. It's, it's easy enough to say, hey, somebody should do that. But then find that person to consistently do it, right? And then I think what we end up with is, you end up having to pay somebody to do it. And even then, it's a struggle to get somebody to do. Those things, even though you're paying them, right? So either you don't do it, you're firing them.
Like she's asking for information from every department.
Right.
And she's not getting it. And she's the mayor.
Yeah, and I get that.
Off with their heads.
That's a legitimate thing, but I, and I guess what I'm trying to get to eventually is that. Like today, I've sat down here and I've just been doing. I can, I've come in and worked all day. I'm trying to my horn, and I've checked in with the people I need to check in, and I've sat down at my desk and I've worked all day. And I had, I did get on Facebook to post our planning commission announcement. But that's it. Julie's been answering the phones. Yeah, Joe's the finance department. He's the one finance guy, so he's got a whole list of things he's working on all day long. And we have a little bit of Laura, where she's working on some different things. She's, she's kind of building the gaps and stuff, but. I think when you look across every department, you know, our police chief, he's one of five. When he's here, he's answering calls all day. Our fire chief is going on calls all day, you know, as the fire chief, working there. Our street department, we got six or seven guys there, Mike's doing street department stuff all day. And so we just don't have a whole lot of excess capacity. And you said, there's like. This really is a job for somebody. Honestly, it is. And you're like, you know, we just don't have that.
We want to do it.
Yeah.
I mean, we'll try to get better at it.
When I, when I first, and I said I've been a little bit, when I first got here, I went to council and said, here's a job, community development person. I want this, cause that's the kind of thing, we needed somebody to do those things, but we've just had different priorities as a councilor, we just. Oh, we need to have more people at the department. We need to have more police officers, right? You just get that tug of war all the time with what everybody.
It's a war hiring anybody additional for anything.
Yeah.
And not only with council, but with the general public.
Yeah.
Cause then they think you're people heavy. Well, you're providing a service. Of course, you're gonna be.
Yeah, I could get enough. I'm already being recorded. We've got some folks over in Hellville. Who like to call in the city building and complain about our people. We've got, we've got more people in the city building than we've ever had before. And why do you have all those people? You know, and then you raise the fire team fifty dollars and everybody's like, well, shoot, look, you're just padding your pockets and you're gonna hire all these people and. That's, that's the struggle with it all, and so. We're trying, I think, the, the group people we have here are a good group of people. We try to, you know. Make do with banning twine the best we can and make things. You know, roll one out here with fancy furniture or anything like that, you know, as a group where.
And I, the, the community needs to know that we're providing them. Name, same number of streets, same number of sidewalks, same number, utility poles, same number of this. With only half the population, right, of what we had forty years ago.
And with a major retail basis outside of city.
And that's, yeah. And then the public doesn't understand. We lost half our taxpayers in the last.
Okay, we argue that all the time. Um, you say, you know, what do you, we need a plan, but you're like. Where do you start? What do you stop doing? Cause you're, you, you kind of stretched to the limit and so it's, it's, we're just trying to.
So, could that be, uh. One of those things, uh, uh, wow.
Let me pass this out to you guys. I.
The terminal view would be.
This is something that we worked on over the last month, and if you've got issues, let's, let's go through this list and see if they fit in there, but I wanted to show you something tangible that we can look at. Start working at, working on. Uh, and like I said, this was, the mayor and I sat down and we said, these are the issues we see together. And we kind of tried to draft them out with goals so that we could kind of keep the ball rolling on our next, you know. Segment, so all this is still up for debate. Don't take this. You know, and I was kind of, when, when you said, one of the things you said was lack of volunteer, and I try to go down through here and see, and maybe. Maybe that's not one of our issues per se. Um, and we could show more than one of our issues, like. You know, the issue number three, aging and declining population, you know, that isn't, it's not a very good explanation. It was something the mayor and I just, like, except we're drafting this stuff out real fast. And we can say, uh, leading to lack of involvement or lack of whatever. And that's not what you want to hear. Another one, you said, marketing, um, there was something in here. Yeah, and maybe marketing isn't necessarily the issue. As far as how we're listing it, but maybe it's something that, uh.
Well, it is in like action items. We did a lengthy section on that. That's not here, but it's. Whoever you want to include that.
But it can even be an objective, I think, when you sit there and say, if, marketing. We've got a lot of commercial activities. We'll go back to pick on you a little bit, Dave. It's like, what are we, why do we need marketing? For what? What are we trying to achieve? You know, and I think we, we want to see the place grow and prosper. And what is growth and prosperity, you know? How do we define that? I think we're probably gonna say commercial activity.
We want an informed and engaged citizen.
There you go.
Where do you buy those at?
I tell you, that, that's. I know it's hard. I'll come up with. But that's the only thing I can see where. When you say critical issues. I think volunteers isn't really a critical issue. And, uh. But without volunteers, without people being on committees. And doing, taking us to the, the, the overwork that you have. And the mayor has. And. But I've seen such a big improvement. In what's happened here in the last four to six years, uh. By the departments, what they've gotten accomplished, I'm really amazed. But, uh, other people, I don't think see. And, uh, if I think maybe if they would see a little bit of, you might be able to get some more volunteers. I could be wrong.
Yeah, I just, uh, you know, I think our culture's kind of suffering from a volunteer standpoint where. I don't know if we just have too many things to entertain ourselves or what, but folks just don't seem to, to take their free, you know, what free time they do have, I guess, and then say. Hey, we'll go volunteer with them.
Well, I can, this sounds kind of funny, but I can remember when the, because this, when the Boy Scouts. Used to do things here in Weston. I don't think they have a Boy Scout. Have a Girl Scout troop. I don't think they have a Boy Scout. Because I can remember contributing money to the Boy Scouts. I know who went to the, one of the ministers at First Baptist Church. Was running one of the programs and, uh. But, uh, there's just a, a lot of things that. That, uh. But you're getting young people, if you can get young people involved, you'd be very surprised what. What some of the young people can do. Sometimes I think we got blinders, sometimes we'd have blinders on. And we're gonna look at one thing and, and you can't see the whole picture.
It's, it's a challenge. I, I've got, I've got an engineering intern upstairs right now, this summer. And he's from, came from Marshall University and say, he's come up here and stayed into the summer and working and he's been really good, like. I don't have to give him very much oversight, but that's a good thing, because like. Yeah, a rural internship, I should be able to spend all day with the guy in a sense and be able to let him shadow me, do things like that, but. From a time perspective, I had a little struggle to carve out the time to even give him proper oversight of the things he's doing. And I'm lucky, he's a good worker and he, uh, smart guy, so I can say, hey. Today, I gave him a task, I said, uh. We want to send out the letters to everybody who's, he went out with Marty and surveyed all the gutters in Hellville. To see if their gutters went into the ground or if they're on the surface of the water. So he ran off the map and we marked off all the houses. He marked off, I shouldn't say we. He marked off all the houses of the party that they thought, they could tell that the gutters weren't going into the ground. But the rest of them, we don't know if they go into sewer, if they go to drain out the back or whatnot, and we don't know where people's from, so. He's taken that list, he put it into our G I S mapping and his caller, you know, he's got his Hellville map now that shows which ones are. And red for bad gutters and green for good. And he wrote a letter, drafted it up, and I gave him a couple of cracks at it and give, give him some proofread and stuff like that. Um, and so he's gonna send out those letters here the rest of this week. And he created an Excel file today and did a mail merge. So he can merge those and quickly print them all off and have everybody's owner address and stuff like that. But it's all I could do to give him proofread and kind of go in there, give him some directions from time to time to keep him moving. He's a smart guy. Luckily, he figures out pretty quick, but.
Yeah, what kind of degree is he?
He's, he's a civil engineering major. Now, I had a criminal justice major from, uh, this spring, and if I didn't. Stay on top all day long, what they were doing, and then the next step, nothing got done. And that was where I, I struggled. This, this spring, that intern, so, and those were college folks, right? It doesn't mean it's, the guy who doesn't go to college can't do it, but I just, I'm kind of seeing the same, those are the people who. Are pushing forward and achieving and stuff like that. So. And it gives, it goes back to, uh, not trying to make excuses, but it goes back to having that excess capacity where you can feel like you could take somebody on like that and. Kind of train them. It's, it's difficult right now. Part of it's using that out, you know, it's just down people.
He has big shoes to fill.
She does, she does, yeah. We just don't have, you know, Brian, Brian, the city attorney, that day, you guys should know this. You know, we've got the four that are appointed by council, the manager, the clerk, attorney, and finance manager. Any of those people get knocked out for any, same amount of time, you just struggle.
Yeah, you don't have somebody there.
Yeah, so, that's, we, we've said this since the beginning, Mayor had when we said, yeah. Weston, I don't think has decided whether it wants to be a big city or a small town. And I. And what I mean by that is, you know, I'm not picking on Sutton, but. You go to Sutton and not a whole lot's happened every day. You're a small town, you know? You see the tumbleweeds kind of blow through town. They're gonna do this and they're gonna call them, tell them in a big meeting, but. It, they're just different, right? They just don't have a population base. They're a very small town. Or you go over to Buchanan or Nalkins and they're kind of a bustling place and they've got a lot more activity because they have a lot more people.
And tourism.
And tours in a different retail tax base. They've got. Right, and we're kind of stuck in between Weston, you know, we're, we're in between them population wise or. Or in between them financially, and so, you know. Having a code enforcement officer for a city our size is pretty much unheard of in West Virginia. You know, and that's very valuable for us because we need one. We've got so many issues there that it's, it's, it's the right thing to have. But, you know, you go to Somerville, who has less people than us, but has a bigger tax base, has the Walmart. They'll have ten or twelve police officers.
Well, yeah, and they're busy all day long. And Fayetteville is different. Fayetteville has actually become worse than ours.
Yeah.
Bridge, boom, there it is.
You see with our population, we just struggle, you know, in order to get more services, you have to pay more, somebody. And we just can't make up our mind who that should be or.
Where do you get that revenue from?
Right, right, yeah. So this lease is a challenge to do much, it seems like. But we're, you know, everybody has the big city expectations. Well, we should, when we call the, the city, please should show up. Well, what God given right is, is that the city police show up, you know? Let's have that expectation. Understandably, but, all right, I got my soapbox.
I think reading down through these, they definitely covered the majority of anything I had written down. One thing that I don't know that's exactly a. An issue for the city other than, I mean, we, since we've even lived in town, we've seen some businesses open and close. And I don't know that. It's something that the city could do per se, but there was a means by which people could help. Uh, get their, their plan together or understand what the challenge might be. Type of business sort of opening up. Um, or if that's just something that until we were pre-split traffic, it's just gonna be hard for small shops. I mean, you might like the cookies that somebody makes, you might buy them fairly regularly, but we're all in the same boat. We don't need cookies all the time.
And, you know, I mean. You're gonna talk about foot traffic. You don't have a foot traffic at Walmart anymore as much as you used to.
Yeah, that's true.
Which people are having it delivered.
Yeah.
And when you stop that, then they're all stopping at McDonald's. Or Hardee's or some of the other, because they're.
Thank you, my wife's not running out there every day, it's on us.
But I go for the socialism.
That's why I don't go to Hardee's.
To be a socialist?
Hey, when he walks in, we all talk about him. He's the topic of the conversation.
Well, let me ask you this question with the marketing thing, because I think that's an important point that probably we haven't really spoke to in this list of issues. Where do you feel, I can see it going a couple of places, new and expanded businesses that attract and recapture retail to the corporate lands. Maybe that's a, a place where we, we have an objective to market Weston more as a destination. Or something to that extent.
Like one dash five?
Yeah, something like that.
I think that's the best one to go under.
Well, let me go back to.
It would be, first five, you're gonna. The recreation area there, too.
Jump down to seven there, okay? I was sitting there thinking like. I wanted to share this a little bit with you guys too, is that through this fire feet thing, there's been part of the string of arguments against it, and it's. Always the cost, but. There's been this kind of threat of people who think maybe we should have somebody else do it for us. Or maybe. Charlotte Weber came to the council meeting, right? She, she made that point. She goes, well, maybe this is a case for increased regalism or something like that, she said to that effect. And I think that that's, you know, some people, when we said, hey, the Weston Fire Department covers places in the county, and said, well, the county should cover. Everything, and our money should stay, just if we're a county resident, we. Everything and our money should stay, just if we're a county resident, we should, our money should stay with the county folks in that aspect. And I think when we put this point down here is that. We were, we're trying to kind of speak to that, like, in our lifetimes, or at least especially in my lifetime, we've heard this giant sucking sound of. Anything that was produced locally has been sent off to far off places. We really don't make anything, we don't grow anything, you know, all our food's imported. It just seems like everything we've been funneled to a larger. Uh, corporate entity that takes care of our needs for us. And what I was, I think, trying to speak to is like, how can we promote more, more locality kind of based stuff, you know, I think. If you want to go to Chili's, you can go to Chili's in Carlsberg, you can go to Chili's in Weston, you can go to Chili's in Buchanan, wherever you should choose, yes, you know, same for Walmart. But I think you kind of have some, if you're not, if you don't have something unique locally, that's the only place you get it, maybe that keeps your dollars here. Um, and I think people need to kind of have a vision for. The, where the place they live is special. I mean, that's a good, a good word, but. They need to have some kind of desire to, to promote the place they live in, see it as a good place. To define value in it. I think that that's, we've really struggled with that as. Community seemingly, I guess. So my, I guess my thought is, when you go to marketing and making, making one more positive image of yourself, maybe it goes in a category like that where you're sitting there saying. You don't have to go to Buchanan to go skating, you can come to what, downtown Weston and skate. Or you don't have to go to Fairmont and go to the flashy lights, you can still come down to Weston and skate, or. You know, if you, you want to buy a cookie, you don't have to go to the mall and go to the food court to buy a cookie. You can buy a cookie at Love Berry Bakery. Things that nature, I guess, or if you want to make whatever, working out on the sewer lines or being a utility worker, these things, you could, those job opportunities are around in our area, that kind of stuff.
Did you see the post, the, the, our lady who works at the museum? It's been a month or two ago where. Someone had made a comment about nothing to do with what, somebody had actually come into the museum and staying in a motel.
Yeah, yeah.
Did you see that one? And then she started listing.
The hotel said there was nothing.
And then she started listing all of that, and then she was just hauling and hauling and hauling.
Yeah.
And, and then all these people were like, oh, I didn't know that, that place was there, I didn't know that place was there, right?
Yeah.
But then some of those people that say stuff like that are. They just. They stir, they stir, like the person today. Didn't, and said Southwest Texas Barbecue's never open, he drives by there every day and it's never open. And I'm thinking. There's people there all the time from Thursday to Monday, it's always open.
Yeah.
But he's, they just stir.
Yeah.
They stir.
It's just like the guy, one of the, the last, one of the committee board calling about the fire whistle blowing off. And. He said, why it keeps going off at ten o'clock every night? Do you remember that? Two years it hadn't been off.
I was just, what, I was debating.
Yeah, I mean, that's.
He came and said, we can turn that thing off at ten o'clock and it's been off for a year. Stay correct, the baby.
But, but that, that's why I need to talk.
Yeah, same nightmare. Yeah, there's.
It is like, I'll do, you know, there's. The motels, or say to, they're. The hotel and motel around here mostly are in arrest and then traffic runs through. And trying to get them involved in what's going on in this county is like, people staying here. And I think I remember telling you all about the market program, the historical society did that one time. And it was surprising about. It really surprised us after we did the marketer's, it's. The historical society, people were going to the hotels and going to the historical society more than anything else. And they were coming and staying for family reunions and, and, and class reunion and stuff like that, the funerals. But. A lot of times the people are there and they don't know. For some reason or another, we're in Weston for a certain period of time, they don't know what they could go in their free time and see or enjoy. And that's kind of, you know, a little bit of marketing. And not necessarily what happens in Weston, but what happens within the county. If they are within the county, they sometimes will maybe stop in Weston if they're, one of the restaurants or. Or, or downtown or one of the.
Most of the people come into last museum, well, where's your place to eat that's not fast food? That's, that's what they always ask for. No, no, they don't, none of them want to go. And then you start, well, I'll be straight over, then it may be closed. But then it's like, well, all right, that's it, we're out of. But, but you, but, but then, or buns, you know, some jivonis, but. You can't.
If it's Monday, they're pretty much dead in the water.
But yeah, you're right, we have, have that stuff here, but some, that takes money, somebody has to be willing to invest, take a chance, and then we notice how. Stop the run of business.
You know that, yeah. What's so tough about running a business?
Well, I, I don't know that.
How much time we got now?
Well, I, I don't know that, that what we're facing fits everybody, but I mean, right now it's keeping people. I, I mean, we're, we're actually at a place, we've got a list of places that would take our services. And we, we can't get enough people that's already certified hired, like it's going to take so long to get people trained. But at the same time, like, we can't attract people in because we need to just be, we need some of the more of those jobs so we can. Give people benefits and stuff that other municipalities are tied into the state with that get, you know, because we don't have a big enough. Uh, group of people to get cheaper on our insurance and things like that, so we, we've kind of run into. Um, this catch 22 thing of, we need more work, be able to pay for better benefits. But then we need more people to be able to get to more work, but then. Like. Yeah, yeah, and so, it, it's circular right now for us, what we're, we're challenged with, so.
What type of training does, does that involve? Or how long?
Well, uh, you know, if you're a surplus water plant, you need at least a class two license on with, depending on what about.
But to get those licenses.
That's probably three years if, if people pass their test right in time. Now, if we get to track people that's got a college degree, they might be able to trade some of that. The degree for time.
That's something a person could do through, say, Tri County, Fred Everly?
Is there starting to try to do some of that, um, in that manner through West Virginia real water, but, um. It's still comes back to the, it's apprenticeship, so you have to have on-site experience. Stefan and I.
You need water or sewer primarily?
Right now, water's the biggest demand and sewer's a little easier in some aspects, depending on what size sewer you're trying to operate. I mean, we're, we're just getting kind of venturing into that, so we're smaller, but. We can have one operator visit multiple plants, but a water plant has to have somebody that's running, that has to have a certified operator there monitoring. While it's in operation, can't run by, take a test and leave.
Okay.
Yeah, so if, if it's a, one of these utilities that usually call us, you know, normally they're, they've got a number of leaks and other things, so they might need. Twelve to sixteen hours a day. And so.
And they can afford that? They can afford to pay you for twelve, sixteen hours a day?
Usually the ones that find a way to do it, we know, we, we haven't had them go away from us. Because, you know, if you run it better, you can save on a lot of ways, but, yeah, I mean, we're not. We're, I don't know, I mean, the, the way it is right now, as hard as it is to find operators. Operators on the side, their wages right now, it's just, it's insane what's going on in the industry. And, and find ones to jump for a better situation, this or that. You know, you used to see that in the gas field, but it's, it's happening in the water industry now. So, yeah, it's.
So for a. For a water op, plan operation, you can't have a, I'm just making numbers up here, class four operator who oversees a class two guy who's there monitoring it every day. So.
If it's a class four plant, you can run it as a class three by yourself. If it's, if it will be a class two operator until they have their class threes.
You can't hire somebody off the street.
At least a class three on site, but you'd have to be a class four to be their chief operator.
I guess where I'm coming back to is, when I'm an engineer, I can, I can basically have anybody do the engineering. At the end of the day, if I'm going to put my stamp on it, then if I review it, you know, I get stuff and it looks good, then I can stamp it. Yeah, I was taking my ability, that's what's coming, what are, what are operations that's similar where.
Well, some things, I mean, when it comes to the distribution work, we have a lot of clients that are purchasing systems, so they're not producing water. And I can have somebody, I can oversee their work as the operator and training, and they go out and reflect samples or run the test or. Wash the irons.
Yeah.
So there's, there's a certain amount of that volume of work, yes, until they get certified up.
Okay.
That, that we could do that, but it's easier for us to take on those. Systems than it is some of the bigger work that's, I'm ever studying.
You could take basically a high school graduate who's not interested in college, who's interesting in the workforce.
Yeah.
You, you start him out as a.
As long as they have their high school diploma or G D, that's, that's one thing that's required. If, that would, that would, that's a little bit tougher for us to, you know. Try to bring somebody in and give them that because we're trying to get them.
No, but I mean, if we're all about going like to the high school.
Yeah, we have, and, and Steph's already kind of put out some fillers with some teachers, okay, if you have some students that are, we started looking that way.
You're going to have.
And.
What's your start to pay as an operator to train?
Uh, about fifteen an hour, so, I mean, that's, and, and if they're doing well, we try to raise it. Within ninety days, and that's starting out with, and, and as small as we are, we're doing retirement, and we're doing eye and dental. But it comes to the, the, the health insurance, we offer a certain amount towards that, and they've got a fine way to fill in the rest, but you just.
Yes.
Then, and that's where, you know, places that can tie into that state benefit, I mean, the states are huge pool of workers that can, they can get insurance, which even we can. And so, yeah, we're, we've, and, and then again, are we recruiting away operators from municipalities that need them? I mean, that's kind of goes against our core mission to begin with, we're supposed to be helping these, this. But it's not pushing their operators.
Right.
So, but, I mean, I, I think, you know, we, what I see in Weston, it, it's, it's a business person that. Trying to figure all this out and understand it. You see people come in, they have passion, they have a good idea, uh, it draws some attention. But over time, they're, they're struggling to have enough people coming in the door, I can't remember, I mean, there's somebody active right now in town, I don't. I mean, I know that this, this is what's been posted on Facebook, but Steph was sharing with me that, you know, it's like, well. Well, we're not going to be open these days, and then next thing you know, you're hearing, well, let us know if you need. You know, and, and check ahead before you come, because it's, it's, just get it, you know, not getting enough business to, or to keep the doors open.
Or they don't have anybody who showed up for work that day.
Yeah.
Then they have, and then.
And, and I think that's a lot of the problem too, and I don't know if people are just able to jump around work or they just don't care, but. I don't know, I mean, I don't know a whole lot of people that's been subsidized by the government enough to just not be able to work, like I hear people say that. But at the same time, I, I'd say since COVID it.
I do think there's a, a more people who are perfectly happy living. Whether, whether it's a roof over their head or. You know, they, they're.
Out in the field.
Out in the field, or as long as they got a, a phone and a pack of cigarettes or. Food in their belly, they're perfectly contained, that's, and there's no. Ambition or motivation to. Like we grew up, it's like, our parents wanted us to have a better home than they did, a better job than they had, a better this than they had. I think we have, we have a lot of people, it's like, I'm perfectly fine with.
Well, it sounds like a real Democrat here, but I, uh, went to the dentist.
Like a real.
And I guess in the sense of. You, that we've heard this mantra probably since I was in high school, how, you know, the cost of living's gotten too expensive and there's the haves and have nots and. You know, there's the, the money interest or whatever you want to call it, and then there's the us down here, and we're not getting a big much share of the pie. When I went to the dentist last week, I was talking to the dentist, and she was talking about the cost of living, and I said, I told her who I was and. So I'll say how much I make, and that, just, just to be fair and out and transparent, I told her what I made, and that's. I said, I'm comfortable, but I'm starting to, to at this point, kind of sit there and I'm, I'm watching things now, or maybe I didn't have to a couple of years ago. And I said, uh. What do you feel is a comfortable salary? She was, she made at Calendari, you know, her son was directly in high school. He maybe picked one path and she wasn't sure whether it was going to make enough money to be living, have a comfortable life, so what's a comfortable amount of earnings? And she stopped and. She thought about for about ten seconds, and she said a hundred thousand dollars. A year is what she would think what you need to make to be feel comfortable. And I said. I kind of chuckled, and she goes, what, you don't think that's true? And I said, well, I said, I don't. I, I can see where it could be true for a lot of people, because I said, I, I'm driving old cars, I've got a ninety thousand dollar house that I've got a three percent interest rate on right now. And so my bills are pretty low, so I can afford to do my lifestyle, but I said, if I had a new house and I had new cars, I'd have to have a whole lot more income. And, and I said, you know, and I chuckled, not because of what you said, but I said, you know, when I was a kid, you would have thought if you made a hundred thousand dollars a year, that was big time. And that was a lot.
And you'd be a very.
You'd be a millionaire, you'd be rich, and all these other things. And now, you know, these articles are coming out, and you couldn't have many dollars to get your kid from zero to eighteen, which is, that's crazy, not true, but. But still, you know, just the things that, that play so much, and I think you get these people, I'm not trying to make excuses for them, but I think, you know, the, the, the level to go from. Zero to a thousand dollars, even though money was different, wasn't, it seemed tangible, like, you know, I could probably do that. But now it's like to go from zero to a hundred thousand dollars a year, that's a lot of money.
Right.
To be able to turn your hand around, I think it just, that defeats people.
It may, yeah, maybe.
Maybe she did come talk, I'll tell you what I'm living on.
Boy, Kevin Hartman, I caught him last week, he said that he's got, he could hire, Kevin complained about workers a little bit and get people, and. I said, well, Kevin, I said, how many jobs did you fill tomorrow if you had to feed them? He says, I can hire two or three tomorrow. And I said, well, what would you start them at? And he goes, well, it's just basic C D I, he goes, I pay them at least eighteen dollars an hour. You guys know if they were good, it'd be twenty, twenty-four dollars an hour, and he can't find anybody to do that work. And so. I don't know, I don't know if there's a disconnect from, there's a pool of people over here can't seem to figure out what they want to do in life and show up every day or what's going on or.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I honestly don't see how that's sustainable. I'm trying to go off, you know, too far on that, but, uh, if you get enough people with that mentality. I mean, yeah, what, you know, you think about what feeds the machine, you know, what keeps the city going, what keeps this going, what keeps that going? If enough people, all they need is a pack of cigarettes and a cell phone. Yeah, eventually there's not enough grease to grease all the clocks.
No, there isn't, but then we still have to come up with services for, for the savings. You still have to come up with that services and no money.
And so how do you move forward? And, you know, and, and I've seen, but I asked when I was trying to do my sixth, you know, and, and the homeless issue come up a number of times, and I was trying to think of. Well, what's the best approach for a city for that, that type of thing? And then I, I just looking at the battalion, having some friends, it's kind of went. Close to down that road, maybe not completely, they will work a little bit enough to keep themselves going by and everything, but it's like. You could, you could spend a lot of effort and time and. There, there's going to be a certain amount of people that are, that's going to be the only path they're going to choose for themselves. Help, you just become another avenue of allowing that to happen, even in some ways, of things you try to lead to help, so it's like. I, I don't know, I didn't either, and. But I do, um, make certain back to this, if there is a way to promote the town, and there is a way to. Add interest. I, I don't know how we, we take advantage of that, but, I mean, if, you know, if I. Drive down the street and the only foot traffic I ever see is people that probably aren't going to be spending any money and the shop's going down the street. That, then that's, you know, that's going to hurt ever, you know. At, at least that sector of, of, of thinking of, of trying to promote something. And how do we put energy and effort and resources to. Make it sustaining, attractive to that?
That's like the lady across the street and they. Every day, FedEx. Or U P S has brought themselves up at their house. And I've never, they don't, both of them were educated. And. They have to be kind of mentioned to them to cut their breath. And the only time I see them believe is when they go to work. That's what a lot of it is. If if they don't go to work, I didn't want to say where they work, but but if they didn't know where they worked, they don't stop anywhere else.
This is.
That's the way society is.
Yeah, sure is.
Yeah, it's it's.
Of course, we've got to figure out a way to communicate these people, there's other things to do besides order their food from, I mean. From different restors and have it delivered to them. And how to get their groceries, where they buy their products. They don't go down, they don't go to a shoe store and out and buy shoes.
I'll buy, I'll buy my, well, I'll actually, when it, when in the the bun, I used to pick up a burger fries, which I like at one o'clock, and while I'm waiting for mine. They filled two DoorDash orders.
People say, well, it used to be Modern Shoe Store, or the Shoe Store, but three or four shoe stores in Weston.
Not at all.
You wouldn't get anybody to sell shoes. But all they gotta do is pick up their.
Yeah.
I do that sometimes, it's the same one too.
Do you think it'd be appropriate to include marketing under a goal one and. And seven, I I'm thinking that as important as everybody is. Is expressing that it should be in both places. And like, on one, you're marketing Weston as a destination, but on number seven. You're showcasing our local value or to promote localism.
Hey, what's, this is a calm topic.
Mm-hmm.
What's the plan with the the vocational complex at the no school? I think.
I've heard nothing.
Is this, is there anybody in there now? Have they moved all the vocational people out of it and put them into the main building?
I want to see, okay, and Art's over there.
Art's still over there?
Art, Art is over there the last time I was in the building, but that's. But. There was, I know there was a talk there a year or two ago about. With the old superintendent to move the the border, I've heard that that down down Roberta Land because of declining population.
Yeah.
But I, but then you're stuck at Central, why do you do that, right?
New city building.
You need a big city building. Yeah, I I I've never been, I've been, I've never been a.
Right.
Past history every time they got a bit of the school in town.
Did you have to write a letter?
She, she made it. If nothing else, you maintain ownership. Forcing to maintain.
Yeah, she just came in.
I think they sold kids and go for eighteen thousand bucks.
She was here for a meeting.
Exactly, that's what they're so popular for.
Yeah.
For sure.
And so the school systems contribute to the decline of the town by, but then they say there's a liability problem, but.
You need to talk to Nate about that, I think we could do it.
Yes.
Am I doing that?
Putting in it to donate the ember arts to the city.
As.
You know, soon to be.
I haven't been in the building.
It is nice in there. I'd like to see a nice restaurant go in there. Or something. Yeah.
You'd have, but then you'd have to have a crosswalk.
Across, yeah, good luck there.
Can't make that happen, can we? I guess, go back to your problem with the operators, we've got to find some way to. Like, I don't know if it's a city thing or a school system thing, but to me, there's no, there's not enough training going on. For for trades, or, you know, and and not even just like, we're gonna offer more electrician classes, right? We need to find people like Alan, who have jobs ready made, that, do we need to offer the training for Alan's folks to get those guys started? Or do we need to, uh, you know, find a program that would fit those more along the lines, but I'm just like.
We we wanted to build a water up plant on our lot right there, tree water coming down to Oak Creek and train operators, building classroom to pop a water plant. And and we had talked to people, we thought we were making some that way on that, and then they seemed to go another way with it, and. But.
But that had to be.
You would have to rent and treat that water.
Yes.
Ain't nothing, there ain't nothing lives in it anymore.
But I mean, you could, you could do reverse solvency, so you could sell the bottled water or yeah, provide it for emergencies. And, you know, if you had enough support. And I I believe if you had the right kind of training, you could actually lobby to reduce the time it takes to certify operators. If you put them through the right scenarios. Because if you do want to.
Arctory, you have to deal with arctory, I mean, does it, we talked about how to control the streams, certain streams.
Yeah. I mean, we we didn't get that far down into.
City.
We were trying to talk to the water and some things, and they, yeah, but, I don't know.
I got some property from John's Creek to suit you, just build a little plant.
Yep.
And had his welding license. And he says, it was okay for him, he got out my license, but he goes, when I, when I really started working welding, he went up Pittsburgh, worked at DeRoe, I think it was. They welded barges up in Pittsburgh on the river before it all shut down, and uh. He said, you know, you go into DeRoe, and he goes, they didn't care really if you had a welding license or not, it was helpful.
They're gonna show you what.
They're gonna show you how to weld, and he said, you had to go through a six-week training, and then you were a welder and you welded for them, and I'm like. I don't know if that should be more of a private side thing, but it's like, is there ways for us to partner with. Local businesses and say, how do we train people to get these people in there? C D L, you've got to be twenty-one, right? That part of it.
Hmm, yeah.
You can't go to Tri-City and become a C D L driver as an eighteen-year-old.
Yeah, well, they had, they have a truck driving.
They do, they do, but I think you've got to be twenty-one, or it's in the adult side, not.
But but I know over there a few years ago, they couldn't anybody sign up for basin ring.
Right.
So they're constantly innovating over there, trying, now they have H VAC. Program over there.
Yeah.
Uh, which several people have have taken H VAC for. Because that's such a need too. So. But I I think a lot of those vocational forces maybe shouldn't be through, I think they should be taller here.
That's kind of my feeling too, is why.
Yeah, I've expressed that before, and, you know, they need to bring back some of these, but then again, he can't find anybody to teach it.
Can't find instructors, yeah.
Yeah, we, we have a hard time finding somebody to teach vocational part, that we have.
Don't pay us. Well, that's just like when I went to school. And when Linger was my machine shop teacher.
Two hundred days.
But he had a shop on the side too.
Yeah. One thing I would, and maybe it's a dumb question, uh, is marketing, because I know that's information I'll with, we might do a number of people and. Be, you know, it it seems like something that somebody when they first do, they hit the ground running a little bit, and then. Time goes on, ideas get a little harder, especially when you're trying to do it by yourself, everybody else is busy doing their own stuff. Is that something we could actually consider formulating and committing on? That people.
Like for marketing?
Gathered, and would be like, I mean, just like we're here, we're volunteering our time to be here, to be part of this. People that's custom buying for the town, wouldn't be just one person trying to do it on their own. But could be something that would be a position that we would then, you know, give thanks to, uh, you know, whatever, I. I don't know what the word, what the role that is, but I I believe that marketing. With the world we're living in, if if we, if we don't ever get that right, then we're gonna struggle in some way or another. If if we, if there's not a face online or in Facebook or, you know.
Falls down to clicks.
And and we're not gonna see feet on the ground. If we don't have views on that.
I think we've really struggled to figure out what the veh- the vehicle for that is, and I think what you're, you're basically. You're speaking to a convention and visitors bureau to a degree, right, and they're supposed to be marketing your area and bringing people to it. And then you've got that vehicle, you've got a chamber of commerce, that thing has some kind of role in there, and we've had in the past, we had a. Downtown business group, and so like, you know, do we?
Have you ever went to their their meetings to find out what their zones are?
Who? Which one?
All of them.
I've been to very few, to be very frank.
You'll find out a lot of it, there are really not marketing a lot.
I don't think so either, I agree.
I think they're just, they just, they they meet, they drink a little bit, eat a little bit, and go home. But as far as really making an effort. To market any product or anything, they really don't go after it. Now, I've been in marketing. When you really want to market something, you need to really get on your feet on the ground, you need to take pictures, you need to take film. You need to get it out, you need to send it, if you want a local industry to come in, you need to send that information to them and tell them. Why they need to come to this location. And that's what, I like Rupert I was with, that's what we did. We got a a company to come into Henderson, Kentucky, that took Coke cans, you know, and mellowed them down. And made transmission casings out of them. But we had to market them to show them why they needed to come to Henderson. And what was it, the advantages of them moving in there. Their railroad, their road system and so forth, and that's marketing, I mean, that's going after something. And. And really going into detail, but you've got to be able to show them why they need to come over. Of course, we, at that time, we had a. Big billionaire and three banks. I'm asking one of them, but but, but you know, I sold, uh. Close to a hundred and fifty acres in in Corina. Yeah, to put a chicken plant in, I didn't know what I was doing, I sold it to a straw buyer, but that's who used to come in. And they'd go to use chicken plant there in Henderson. But. They had that that straw man gathered up all the information on why that company should move in there. He, of course, that's what he did for a living, he worked for different companies. And they were looking for a market, a a plant to move their product. You know, closer to to their center, and that straw buyer said, well, this would be a good area. And he'd come down and got all the information from the, the. The marketing committee that, that was there, and. So bring it, bring it to come in and put in the big horse. And they even ended up building, you listen, they bought more acreage and built a trailer park because they couldn't get. Now, this is getting people to come to work, they couldn't get people to come to work there. And then they come, oh, I ain't gonna work there, chicken plant, cut me chickens up and all of that.
Yeah.
So, a green bus, you put more than one green bus would come in every six months. In Mexico, they went into that trailer park. And they was the ones that worked there, but I'll tell you, that was the cleanest arena, where they made sure that. They had their own security, they have the cleanest place you ever seen. But I mean, I didn't sell it, I just happened to be. I worked for Collier Lucky at that time, and I was in industrial properties, because I had my job like that. They just happened to, he just happened to call me out.
All right, let's just, I'll just go down through these look, these issues here a little bit, if you guys see something else that jumps out, please stop me and let's talk about it. Uh, issue number two, we 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 said dilapidated, outdated, substandard, vacant housing. And so this wasn't just a category, you want to say, our issue isn't just the vacant ones, it's the dilapidated ones, it's it's also. If you want to attract good people, you're not getting them with nineteen sixties wood paneling and. You know, the old stove sitting out in the middle of the kitchen without any cabinets around it, and it's not not a perfect housing vehicle, it's not attract those types, and we've got, we're working something different there. So that was, we moved from that issue to goal number two, which is better living opportunities and conditions for all, so. We're trying to say all the different types of housing that you may have, entry-level housing, all the way up to maybe my more higher-end stuff, I think we 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 have room for that.
So who who do you gather this housing for? Hmm, because that housing needs to be defined, well, which will you want to attract?
Well, that's that's a good question, but I think like we talked, we talked with Claire last week, like. We've got, we've got all kinds of issues, right, where you don't have, we just don't seem to have anything of quality across the the limits. And so people have a hard time even getting out of their house and selling their house and going into a new house because there's no stock to even trade. Yeah, but I agree, I mean, I think that that's.
I think that's why we put all, because we figured, you know, retired couples, working startups, families.
And frankly, I don't think we're gonna, I mean, if there's one category of people that we're not gonna really cater a whole lot to, and that's, that's probably the higher-end folks at this point in Weston. It's because we just don't have the the lots really to.
No, they're going, they're going to your place up here on the lake.
Right, right, I think that's where it's where we're headed, and and, you know, maybe there's some nicer developments that could be developed outside the city, I don't know, but. I think at this point, that's a brand-new development outside of our corporate limits rather than the downtown, yeah, we're gonna struggle with it. So we said, our our objective in the next ten years is not having more dilapidated structures, so right now we've got about twenty-five. Uh, we're hoping to get another state grant at some point that would help us knock these out quicker, but I think in the next ten years, if we stay on our path of. Fifty thousand dollars a year, we can get most of those down, it's almost not too many more developments, and that's the struggle. Um, then, uh, objective two, improve physical attractiveness of structures in Weston, so we thought of something like. Our facade grant program, let's see those things, patents continue, so we want to see people continue to make what we have look more attractive, bring things up. Uh, code enforcement, life safety issues, and all structured, we're committed by law, this is where I'm getting back to our substandard. Housing, we've got a lot of places where we just don't even mess with them at this point, because people live in there, and I think. Once you get rid of the dilapidated problems, and you can move to the next tier of substandard housing, and that's gonna be places that, you know, don't have. Regular electricity and all that good stuff, you can start working on those folks over time. And then, especially in the rental area, I think, you know, that's that's one of our issues, is that. We we haven't put, and hopefully nobody's landlord listening to this at this point, but. We don't put enough pressure on landlords to to keep their houses up to date, and so then they just attract people who will buy non-up-to-date housing. And that that causes a problem, it's a chicken and egg.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but.
And it's unsafe, especially when there's small children present.
So somebody's got to, somebody's got to meet that demand maker. And then objective four is encourage new housing in filling developments, and so that's where we. You know, I think with our land re- agency, we've got to start figuring out ways to get houses built, whether that's a. You know, the most extreme side, which I'm not necessarily advocating for, but it's like, it's a city buy a house, like I drove up by Clayton Homes up a can, and I had a nice, long, skinny one the other day. That was looked kind of nice, and it didn't necessarily look like a mobile home, and I was like, can a city just buy a house like that and plop it down and then turn around and try to sell it? You know, and see if somebody will do it, maybe we put the capital up front and just try to get those things in filling. It's an extreme option, or we just, you try to sit there and say, we're just gonna make these lots we have available, open them to a developer and try to recruit somebody, come in there and build, build a house or two. That's, that's, that's an option.
I decided to take a piece of hillside there at Nine Buns.
Yeah, yeah.
I, me, I looked at that piece of property and I thought. Ain't no way I'd do a place to put in apartments, but he's doing it.
Well, and he got it for the right price, you know, he got a free PC limit. But, uh, yeah, but yeah, and I think he he would be a prime candidate, who said, if we just, if we had a lot up on the internet saying. We'll sell this dollar, this slot to you for a dollar if you build a house on it, he just showed up the next day and said, I'll build a house on that for a dollar.
Yeah, you can go, you know, High Street there, and there's potential to have five or six lots here in a row.
Right.
That would be totally gone, you know, vacant, now it's toward Alan.
So those are, those are things I think we want to try to work on.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, any other things on that issue two you guys wanna?
Take two.
Issue three, aging and declining population.
I'm proof of that.
Well. And it's not gonna be sandbagging the older folks, right? But I think it goes back to, we just don't have a pool of people. Who are working age, working abilities, and that's causing a whole host of problems there for them. And so our goal was in an increase in population of a thousand people by twenty thirty five. That's on that.
That's a.
There's a lot to go on.
And because you just mentioned one of the reasons why that goal was gonna be started when you start talking about housing. If you, how do you want to increase the population by a thousand unless you're bringing in a thousand old people?
We build a thousand high rises.
That sounds good. That may be, that may be one of the solutions to increase the population.
Oh, yeah. Seven years ago, you were on a waiting list to get in Chris Manor and out of empty rooms.
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah.
Why is that? Because.
Uh, what they did, they lowered their requirements coming in.
The uh, state, I mean, the government, federal government told them you can't have an empty room and uh. If someone needs to.
It wasn't that so much. They lowered what they ended up doing was lowering.
Because the government told them they had to.
They had to lower, you had to be sixty five or older, whatever it was.
So people still don't even live there.
So now all you had to do was be homeless. And they can move you in.
Or income.
And then the the people that moved out were people like me. I can't live with four kids running around and. People smoking dope in the next door. And so they left. And that's what's happening. That's what's happened in Chris Manor. It's what happened to, I have one out there on Long Street, one out.
There, there.
You can't, you can't mix the groups together. And. You can't take senior sentences, you know, I'm not, I'm not gonna stay in a place. That's like in my neighborhood. I've watched pretty careful the people walk up and down the street and up, up and down the alley. And. I'm, I know how to take care of that problem.
That all comes back to there, right? Because of where the funding is coming, the source of that is the house, correct? So to even push back against that.
You might probably take it back to the federal.
Well, dude, so basically just gonna have to go out, hold up campaign signs for somebody that wouldn't. Make and all the others do those kind of things, correct? I mean, that would be, yeah. It's it's it that that's gonna be whatever, when change comes through.
I thought there was wayless. There's not wayless at Chris Manor. There's like empty spots up in there.
There's there's empty room, yeah.
Excuse me, when I, we tried to get my mother in there, we had a waiting list of over a year. Before we could get her in there.
No, there's, they have some empty rooms.
And it, and you can go talk to the older people up there, why, the ones that's left, ask them why they left.
Yeah. I agree. I, looking at the thousand people by twenty thirty five, I I think that's a good number. I've been in ministries and different things, and sometimes you wanna set like. You don't wanna set that sight too high because if you, if you can never make it. You'll never, you know, it can be a defeating thing for the people working towards it. But sometimes you want. High goals because even if we don't get it within that ten years, we're still gonna get it. Doesn't matter. This is what we need. So this is what we're working towards. And and I I really feel that that's probably where that falls in. So I like that goal.
I think I now, I don't know why the rules are, but I know seven years ago. If you went to Chris Manor on each floor, people have tables out in the lobby on each floor, they work puzzles and it's set around socialized. Now there's signs, nothing's allowed in the lobbies on each floor. The head chairs downstairs, when you come in, we will be sitting down there, talk all the time. They're taking all chairs away. They don't want people sitting in the lobby, uh, they used to have. Bingo, they used to have this, they used to have that. Covid hit, they eliminated all that stuff and they're they're not really bringing those things back post-Covid. So people's like. Not a happy place. Now, I don't know about Harper's or any of them. First man, place of us. And July, I guess.
Somehow the city's got some kind of twisted role in it though. We point members of the Weston Housing Authority. And the folks that are charged and managed with Chris Manor. And we've got some kind of point of place to play. It's difficult.
It's difficult.
It's false.
It's called not.
Right. Let me ask you on this, on the increase in population of a thousand people by twenty thirty five, that's our goal. So we said our objectives is a community considers needs of all age group, promotion of age diverse community. But do any of either of those two objectives really move the needle as far as getting a thousand people here? I don't know if we'd stop mid thought there, but we didn't seem that. I think you need, yeah. First question, if you have a thousand people show up tomorrow, are we sticking them? Yeah? And like we said, we're gonna build a high rise, have a thousand old people show up. We're gonna open state hospital, have a thousand crazy people show up. How are we gonna, you know, how are we gonna do it? And then in one of the other challenges, you know, I think right now are are. Our household sizes in the United States have dropped so much. We like you said, if you want a thousand people and you've got two people in the household, that's five hundred.
All the units.
Housing units, yeah. So we've got to think about that too. It's like, where where are we gonna? Think part of you, in order to meet that goal, you've had to have an objective that's taken something like that into account or what you did. So in new single family homes, we're building high rise apartment.
Annexation, this will be one other way for adding area that's gonna add people, units and people. And potential areas for growth.
It'd be fun. And I mean, I think if you. I'm not, not pimping annexation, but we took our Mesa Edition tomorrow, pick on people Mesa Edition. We took our Mesa Edition tomorrow. That doesn't help your problem any. You still got that same pool of workers. You need, you need a thousand new bodies in Lewis County, right? We don't just need to have a thousand new residents necessarily. We need a thousand new people. Yeah, not a thousand, but sure. You gotta go.
Sorry.
Dave, before you go, on the descriptive part of this plan, there was a portion on education and. I think we wanted Dave to supply some additional information, didn't we?
Think so.
Just an overview.
Send me what you want.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll do that.
Send me what you want, Dan.
Okay. They may just, we may just draft it and say, we've got some numbers we want you to fill out, the best idea for you.
And I'll see if the shoeper can fill that. She might want her comment back for you.
Hope so, I feel better.
I think they need an excuse.
So are you saying they to add an objective which takes into account housing for these different. Age diverse housing?
Yeah.
I know, it seems to me like people are looking for smaller housing. And they used to, and like, I live in a. Three-story, which is cut in the basement, three-story brick. It's more of like a hoarding. If anything would happen to myself or my wife. I am. I wouldn't live there. I'd be looking for a one-bedroom.
Right, right.
And but I would love to rather have like a one-bedroom house than I would.
An apartment.
You know, an apartment. I would rather be to where some, I had some kind of control over. Within at least a hundred feet of a raccoon.
But probably not, you know, we'll be mowing three acres either, right? You wanna just, you probably want a little bit of a yard, but not very much of a yard.
Yeah. Like I have my yard. I hate have my yard cut now. Uh, but. I can't beat it. And I can't get it done.
Yeah.
I mean, I can do it. Don't get me wrong, but it takes me all day to do my yard and. Add a ring, come in, ten minutes, they're in and out and going. It looks a lot better when I do it.
I'll press your time. I'll I'll push through. Issue four, annexation of developable land areas. We wanna expand and see the footprint to free up some services. And what we mean by that, I think it's, we got. Running in different directions. And so, you know, we're not looking at annex place that means necessarily super. We first try to.
Let me get this out of here.
Okay.
Of course, I was on the last annexation thing that threw there and. There, I wasn't for. I mean, this is my personal opinion and of course, I expressed it to him, I wasn't for it. Annexing everything it would add. But I think the city needs to look at a percentage of an area. And instead of trying to take a whole lot at one time, take a slice at a time. And do it every year.
But I think the issue thus has always been that it's voluntary now. Yeah, we can't, I think we take whatever slice wants to volunteer voluntarily come in, but nobody has come forward to say, hey, we wanna come in. And maybe we haven't done a good enough job of marketing ourselves. I don't know, but. The few conferences we've had have been pretty.
Can you annex all properties that? Uh, you know. We had, at that time, we had different areas that said they wouldn't. Go against us for an annexation. The county killed us more than anything else. Uh, just like going out. West and picking up. The only person that was against us on the right-hand side, all the way to Smith Run, that Stone Cold Creek area. Was uh, the person who ran the golf station. Now, the other businesses due there agreed. Verbally, they they didn't write it down, that they would come in with no opposition.
I wish, where are you at here, sorry?
Well, that's count, that was counting uh. The chicken place and parties and at that time and all that, all they agreed to commit. They didn't have no problem with them because they were all owned from the state. And they could see an advantage of coming in with the city, even if they, it didn't bother them about what kind of taxes they were going to pay. They were more interested in police protection and part of protection and so forth like that. And they were agreed, their name Bud Burton was the only one at the golf station that. He was, you know, he was afraid that they was gonna gonna cost him a million dollars and give us his home and everything else, but. If you know Bud, that's the way he thinks. But even on the other side. The only other person ended was the person that that had the your class pack. I mean, they didn't wanna be, but. That would need no problem. But there's areas, I think, that you could. Uh, and then there's an area that was taken away from the city. Of course, I presented this to you all, but uh. That could be brought back in within the city and. And of course, my sister had to pay city taxes in too, which. It just because someone of importance walked up to the county assessor and told, it kind of record or not, the rest. The county clerk told her to change the, change the boundary. So she did. And that was all because of Princess House. There was afraid that the glass factory would go under. That was before the princess house. Would go under if they had to pay any city, any more city tax, in which they were paying city tax at that time, so they took it out. And that property is actually in the city. And the last word I got, the last lawyer I talked to, is that the city would have to have a survey done. On that, then it would come back. Whether that's true or not, I don't know that skill there. But there's different areas. There's the same way out, out at uh. On G Lick, their property there that uh. Should be brought into the city, back into the city. And we plow the road. Take the snow off the road, but the people who live on the upper side don't pay city tax, people on the lower side do. But we plow the road.
And we're gonna take care of people over there.
I mean, those are, you know, areas that I think needs to be looked at. And I think we could, I think the city could annex. I don't know what the laws are now. Be truthful, I haven't been into them, but I don't know what the laws are now on annexations, but. I think if you, if you annex pieces at a time, you'd be a lot better off.
Yeah.
Could be wrong.
Yeah. You know, we then increase to increase tax, see tax base, provide more efficient cost of services. We're all spread out here. We don't have a retail base. And then objective four to encourage development of property in the urban growth area. And urban growth area, I don't know if that's, I'll read it. Most, most of this town across the country have these areas that they kind of define as. Eventually, we're gonna do it out there. As we expand, as we grow, those are gonna be the area we come into. And I think. What we struggle with in Weston a lot of is that. We're just so spread out. We're gonna have twenty five pump stations to get from this piece of property, this piece of property, this piece of property. And to get our sewers and stuff like that. And then you're, you're driving your police car five miles, you know, to hit these different spots and like Peterson Central. It's just not effective for us not to. Go out there for one, one property. So. Right now, you know, if you look at Weston, we stop at the KFC, there's a lot of parcels. Out there that are probably underutilized or very, very little developed that doesn't seem like they take a huge precedent towards from. Anybody to develop those and do anything with, so. I think that's one reason when you annex, you wanna try to add territories so that you can focus on this most case, see those properties get developed and used for something. We don't have a ton of open spots right now to to think about trying to. Very sad. Um, issue five, insufficient recreation opportunities, like we're going to capitalize on existing natural resources, develop recreation. So. We have the riverfront redevelopment that we've started, we need to finish. Uh, objective two, tie Weston into the greater north central Washington Greenway Trail. So that's the Parkersburg, Coltsburg line and Coltsburg to Morgan Town. Trying to connect those dots and they're gonna have this huge. Uh, national trail network. So we're gonna try to tie our town to that spur. Um, objective three, develop recreation program to the Parks and Recreation Board for all of age groups. So. That's part of what we're working with with American War right now is to try to, so that recreational program. Try to build, build an actual parks and rankings. The partners. Anything else there from you guys? Issue six, holistic transportation planning. This is where we get into sidewalks and stuff like this. Built to consider all transportation using existing transportation projects. Better walking conditions in Weston, that's an objective. Number two is integration of bicycles into existing travel corridors. So around some, like. Every time I drive out on thirty three, I don't remember those where it says bike route begins, bike route ends. You know, so people ride on thirty three, see them sometimes on the shoulder. Well, that's that's the state marked bike route, but when it gets to the interchange, it just says it ends. And it's like, well, if you're on a bicycle, where do you go? What do you do? Any of that stuff and so.
We shove you out in traffic.
You just go down Mud Lake and forget about it. But uh, so I think that if we can somehow lobby, you know, we've annexed the road out that way, if we can try to work with the state. Bad chance, but work with them to try to integrate bicycles and get those. If we do have a trail network in town, so they connect that. Uh, more promotion of UTV friendly establishments. This was kind of a sharp, shot in the dark, but. The mayor has a side by side. Um, I went to, was it Oakbrook Island a couple summers ago? And everybody that rode their golf cart around and Santa Vala was the same way in Florida. And we were like, you know, it would be kind of nice to have a community that maybe. People did that more, you know, you've got Betty, Billy, you ride the ride of golf cart around town and.
There, there was a procession of them yesterday coming into town.
Oh, really?
Yesterday afternoon.
Okay, or golf carts?
Uh, they were the side by sides.
All side by side, yeah. So you know, I think West Virginia's taken a few steps that already down south with their huge UTV network they've got going on there. So it's something we can try. Um, and then in connection to regional public transit networks. We just stuck that in there because we hear that siren call from everybody all the time about we need a bus or there's nowhere for people to get to places and. We just stuck that in there, because we hear that siren call from everybody all the time about, we need a bus, or there's nowhere for people to get their places, and. I don't know the answer to all that, but I think that's probably some kind of. How do we get people from Weston to Coltsburg for their documents, or, you know, senior centers, take care of their, if people qualify or don't qualify. We wanted to try to put that in our plan. Uh, increase regalism, uh, the, this is the issue, decrease local production, so. Uh, build up seven, keep, keep local dollars within the local economy, so we said, promote, develop local homegrown restaurants. That are probably, you know, earned by locals, explore local service delivery business models. I don't know what we talked, I think, I was told we talked about trash service, they, subjective seven two, we were trying to sit there and say. Is there a better way for us to locally deliver some of these services that we are getting instead of having a regional approach? One of us, I told the mayor this, I worked in Fort Scott Kansas, Pittsburgh Kansas, was a lot bigger town, it was probably twenty-five, thirty thousand people. They had a study commission to say, should be run our own electric service, and, and, uh. High-flying consultant come in and do a study and say, this is how much money you're gonna have to bond for, do that kind of thing, so I think that those are things that. Whatever service, whether water, electric, or whatever, maybe those are things you, you look at as a, this fact is that can we get it better? Better business or better delivery, or cheaper services if we could use it ourselves instead of franchising to someone else. Objective seven three, integrate local agriculture into the city ecosystem. And then last, that objective seven, fourth, marketing Weston with value. I'll say this, you know, John Real has been, he was in Quiet Dale, he was going to Skim graduate, he has a dairy farm in Quiet Dale, and so he's been. My brother-in-law with the farmer's market, he's been pulling up to John and grabbing a cooler of milk and bringing it to the farmer's market, and he's sold out, every week he's brought milk. Really? Yeah, he has, he has done that, and I think that. The more things we can encourage like that locally in our county, I think there's a market for, for products like that, that. It might not be a million-dollar-a-year industry, but. Put money in John's pocket, and he's selling, he's getting four dollars a gallon, where if you was selling commodity-wise, it'd be twenty-five cents a gallon. Issue eight, addiction and behavioral health. You know, we, it's goes back to our homes and all that stuff, we just gotta find ways to deal with this, to avoid, to reduce, eliminate the effects of drug addiction. And so, we've got, our participation in local drug task forces. Integrate city services outside agency prevention efforts. Then, uh, eight three is promote drug rehab practices, post-dependency and sedary services, and that was it, you, Mayor, if you come up with that. Raise post-dependency and sedary services. Any other issues you guys wanna bring to the table?
I think, think this, this, I think the nation needs more volunteers. I look around here.
Need somebody who wants to type.
We need a few more volunteers.
You agree with her down?
Yeah.
You, uh, I believe so, um, as far as anything that you're working on, or just not around, somebody, any? I think we just need to have a meeting quick. Instead of waiting till like the end of June, of course, we were off because of our.
Yeah.
We, we bounced it back. I know this, the second week in June is tough for me, but let's go ahead and try to figure that out. And the goal is to have a draft, I think, put together, this week's pretty much not for me. We trying to do it the eighteenth or the nineteenth?
Yeah.
I went up to eighteen, because I think Dan's got church on Tuesday night, so that's why he wasn't here tonight. Nineteenth to twentieth?
Um, yeah, uh.
It's West Virginia Day.
Oh, wait, that's, wait, what was that? That's the week that I'm out, pretty bad.
Always something.
How about the twelfth?
I'm fine.
Twelfth to June?
Yeah.
So you wanna have a meeting and tie it together and?
Well, I was hoping to have a draft to give you next night, but I just couldn't get there.
No, what's wrong?
The conglomeration thing, that's where I'm struggling, like I don't know what our structure is. I think I gotta break this thing apart, so I can focus on one part of it.
Go ahead, but I love the action steps, so somewhere you gotta leave those in there.
Well, I think you gotta put those, we've got our issues, we've got our objectives, but I think you gotta put your action steps on. I'll follow that.
Okay, me too.
Let's try to, I'll try to have us draft it the twelfth, let's, let's pencil that in or go next week.
I think it's really important that we get that out there, you know, have our public meeting to review the draft, because. The county's plan is coming along right behind ours, and so they just have their community meetings. And they already have the results of their surveys, and I don't want the public to get confused with whose plan's whose.
Yeah.
So I'd like to get ours pushed out there.
We approved this one in September of twenty fourteen, and we have to do this every ten years, so. It's not getting, we're getting close to our deadline.
All right.
Hopefully we have a motion to adjourn.
I'm making a motion for adjourn.
Yeah, I'll second.
I didn't know where there were gonna be enough people to say.
We can't, we can't, we can't end, we don't have a forum to.